Good evening, how y'all doing? We're glad to work with y'all tonight to this forum to discuss some issues, disband the police department. We've got two people over here that I want to talk. On the Council of the Mayor's behalf, Mr. Don Calhoun. The other captain, Ward Light, the socials mayor. And apparently, the guy that came back in the night. Marie, the facilitator. Marie is a flavor.
We're the Lady of the Parish, so it's peace, call it as it is. Here is Homer, we're trying to renew the D and P's, talking. We try to buy it for real.
Thank you for being here, y'all. They're going to ask some questions, and these questions are going to be directed to the council and the mayor. If you've got it already and you want to give it to her, we're going to present them to the council and give them opportunity to answer these questions. Court case has been moved next Monday. We was hoping tonight we'd be able to discuss some issues, but there's still been a litigation on it. I'll come up suit to protect the police department so we can maintain what we're doing now. So at this time, I wanted to do, Mr. Terry Willis, President of the ACP, Lady of the Chapel. He's got a complaint with the Justice Department, because it deserves her. And these questions can be shared and discussed, but I don't know what level of mansion that we're going to be able to do tonight. We do appreciate y'all coming, and we want this to be a peaceful meeting. We want to do it right. Not here to watch the finger divided argument, plus we just want people's voices to be heard and the questions to be answered. We're going to do the best that we can, okay? Thank you, everyone.
As a man of God, before we do anything, I think it's good to say, listen, include Him in our prayers, amen? So let's have a word of prayer if you would. Father God, we come to you at this time to give thanks for letting us gather together, Father God. Father God, we know that these are some trying times that we are in. But we know, Father, that you said, "Well, two or three are gathered." Surely, there will be a tremendous amount of work. And we're asking for your Holy Spirit to come into this place, Father God. Father God, be with all of those who are here today, no matter what shape, no matter what form, no matter what gender, no matter what color. Father God, we are all your children, and you gave your only-begotten son for who so evil, Father God, so we know that we are all truly blessed. We pray that your Holy Spirit again be with our government officials, for they have a tremendous job ahead of them. And Father God, let us constantly remind ourselves who we belong to. We are all your children. We pray these things in your son, Jesus Christ's name, amen? Well, on the first one up, let me begin by saying, by informing the community where the NAACP stands. Whenever that organization is, the National Advancement, it's a national organization for the advancement of community. But it was designed behind that equality of humanity. So I want you to understand, we are not racist groups. So what we basically, why I'm here, because we represent those who can't or won't represent themselves, and this is a community issue. So I would be less than a leader if not trying to bring those concerns together, amen? I feel like, we're all saying that we're Christian people. But we, somehow, another one of the most sacred times that we live, maybe this on Sunday morning. Now, if we can desegregate our minds and our spirits and most of all, your money, then this is with me, though, amen? So what you have here, I see history in the making, no matter what the percentage. I've been here all of my life, and I can't remember besides a football game or sporting event where I've seen a variety of people, black and white, gathered. So that means we're reaching some common ground, amen? The first concern was about disbanding the Homer Police Department. We had calls from the community, in our part of the community, which did not know the issues. And there are safety concerns that exist there in the community, to where some felt as though that was detrimental to head. I know we've been in a situation in the past to where we've had a lot of racial issues. But how we bring that together, I feel, if you got a leak in the roof, you don't tear the house down. If it's the leak. If you got a roof that broke into the house, you don't have a wall around it to paint. And I think what we need to do is come together and find another solution, because we're taking away, you're jeopardizing the safety of the city. And this is not, listen, I'm not here to give the mayor or the city council, okay? We're talking about a voice that was given to the people and by the people. And one is no different than the other. Our senior citizens, I've got a tremendous amount of calls from my seniors. What are they going to do? Now, we've tried to inform them the best we could that we would have law enforcement in those communities. But if we think about it, we're talking about the time, the response, and nobody really knows what led up to this. So you're here now, hopefully, to get an explanation, but also to voice an opinion with this being your city. You pay taxes. You've lived here, some of us have been trapped here. You know, but I was one of those that felt like, hey, if I can make a difference, I wanted to be at home. So I was grown, and I could have left, but I wanted to make a difference here in my own community. And I think that if we will start desegregating our hearts and our minds and realize that we are all one unit, we can make it here, it's time for us to drop some of the barriers. And I know it's going to take time. I know it's going to take time. But we've got to start somewhere, and this is a start right here. So I commend each and every one of you that came out to voice your concerns about public safety. I help with me Ms. Rhianna Porte, C.R. of the Department of Justice, who's here and came in. Because sometimes, you know, we'll mess up times, so we're trying to get people outside. This is about just hearing, hearing, hearing the voices of the public of those who you represent, amen? And if we can do that, then we've started to gang some common ground. I personally feel, and it is my personal opinion, that we need public safety. I know we've had some problems in this community with law enforcement, but I think, again, it's coming to the table and having some type of resolve and getting the chief to work with the community and on what we can do. It's going to be very hard for law enforcement. If you don't have a conflict with law enforcement or running with law enforcement, then you probably won't have a problem. That's, I'm just being logical with you. And that's the way it is, it's a hard job. I worked law enforcement for six years. But I also know I would be stupid and a liar to tell you that we don't have some problems. But what we've got to do, just as I brought the illustration to the roof, is to start fixing it. Is find out what our problems are, so that you don't have to suffer with your public safety. And I think, basically, the city owes us that, to give us something, you know, this is our life. This is our livelihood, those of you who have businesses. You've stayed here to make it. So it's hard enough. And we do have a criminal element in this city and in this parish. No one's in denial of that. But this is a start for us all to come together. Again, this is not a personal attack on our city government, because they have a hard job, and we know them. But hear our say. You've got to hear our voices. We cast a vote, and that's what this is all about. So I thank you, and if anyone else want to come to the podium, I don't know our facilitators, our question and answer processes, if there's anyone else that has some input, Ms. Marie?
Good evening, Homer. Pack of ones sitting next to you, you are true citizens of Homer, and I'm very proud to say that it's very exciting to see that people are concerned about the welfare and well-being of our community. This is home to some of us. Some of us are merely pardonsers and a pardon man. We come up here, we come to Homer, we take apologies, we take control of him. I have no problem with people in authority. I have no problem with people executing their ability to lead. But if we have a problem with the Homer Police Department, it's the same problem we've had for the last 50-plus years. Nothing has truly changed. I review policy and procedure management. The only way we can have effective police officers is we have to invest. Maybe not money, but we have to invest time. We have to invest support. And support comes in more than the police academy. If there's a problem with one of our police officers acting off the line of duty, the process and procedure should be outlined in policy and procedure management. Our chief is responsible for making sure they adhere to the policy and procedure. If the chief fails to do, provide them the support that needs to be documented, showing that we are making an effort to make sure they are efficient and effective in our community. If the chief wheels fail to go back there to accomplish the mayor's position to provide support, chief wheels need to be an effective leader in that department. If it fail, who fail? Did the police officer fail? Did the chief fail? Who fail? You sound like a father of town to me. I don't know if anyone else takes notice, we need our police officer. My mom. By chance, we have police officers that's incapable of performing their duties. Replace one, don't kill another one. Everybody in here, sometime or another, their life, their careers, their working overtime. If you went in, you were the CEO of the hospital, they said, "There's your office, do your job." Would you be an effective leader? No. How do they expect these men in uniform to be effective if they don't have the support they need? Not from just our chief, but our chief and our mayor. These are men that have sacrificed their life, their family. And if it's just one, replace that one. We're talking about the funding. We do not have funding, and I'm speaking on behalf of the notes I received from concerned citizens in our community. What I did, I reviewed them all, and I'm consolidating in this speaker right now. One of the largest concerns is we're funded to have a police department. What's happened to our funding? What's going to happen? We passed a tax to support the police department. What's going to happen to those taxes? And should we sacrifice our safety for ten employees now at the city hall? And what's ten employees doing at the city hall? Is it more important for us to have police officer, or is it important for us to have two attorneys? I'm trying to stand for the comeback. I ask for everybody to leave their heavy artillery outside the door tonight. This is about us coming together. We have to come together, or we might as well just everybody move and shut down the town. We have to have people among us in the leadership role that's committed to this community. This is home to some of us. Some of us have never left this community, some of us, such as myself, never, I came back. But when I came back, my teachers said, "Come back home," I wanted to come back home. I didn't want to come back to this disaster. And the sad part, it brought really tears to my eyes on last week. I have a baby that moved back here. And if you want me to be more specific, she was a white lady. She canceled her office while I was working at it. She said to me, "I'm out of here." So why would you want to be out of there? Nobody want to come here. I said, "Well, you were here." She said, "That's why I'm leaving." If you come in, you come in outside the circle, they keep you outside the circle. They won't let you in. You want to shoot everything along racial lines? I would see white, black out there, I see the certain people. Every time we have an issue, we shoot racial. Well, let me shoot some issues. There's so many lines, I can crisscross the horizon, I don't know what side of the road you're driving on. If it's not racial, it's social. If you're not a part of the social circle, you're not included. Or if you love this terrain, you're excellent. So where do we find the equilibrium in our community? I have a, and like I said, I went through the questions, I combined them, consolidated them, and from these questions, some of this is my opinion, but that is exactly what I stand on. One question that we know the most in my mind, I'm concerned about. When the city council and the mayor decides to make a decision, who does the research and development on their decision? I have worked in hope in America. I have seen oilization shut down and transition over to other areas, but I've never seen one do it in two weeks. You bet. I have a problem. One thing people need to take into account seriously, it's not the destination that you have to choose most. It's the journey to the destination. If you do things the right, proper, and correct way, you won't have to worry about it. Now, everybody goes in all this territory and get into the pit mode. Look, when you open the can of worms, trust me, a worm will pop, and everybody in thirty mile range. And I can see it happening right now. One of the questions came up about the city code. Are they familiar with the city code? Are y'all familiar with the city code downtown? One of the codes in city ordinance said, "Yes, the board of selectmen can vote on the mayor a pay increase. They can vote on their own pay increase." But guess what? It can't be implemented in this, but that's how. Because my understanding, these people will get paid now. If you want a copy of that town order, send me the dog, I'll give you that copy. The person who presented that in a question board, but this can't be true. So I took it on my own, and they got a copy of that order. Let me tell you. Rumor has it, she don't live in the city limit. If anybody even care to see my child, it's not so much. If everybody doesn't have two homes, so can I. I'm not going to shoot Buster down, I'm not going to shoot the mayor down. But if I'm going to pull the trigger, two bullets don't fly, man, when you shoot one. It's only fair, only thing I'm asking for is unity. Let's come together. Without a solution, we don't have a problem. So if we cannot come up with a solution to resolve our differences, the first thing we have to do is be willing to accept our differences. We all have our own opinion, we have our own take. I don't know if they're not police officers over there, I don't know how long we've been on the force. I bet you know that one, though, that all I know, when they see me and I see them, they treat me with utmost dignity and respect. Could that possibly be how I carry myself with them? When I see the chief, nothing but respect. So for me to say that they're not polite and nice would be a lie for me. But there's others that have some concerns about how the police officers don't do that. Well, like I said about a week ago, nobody likes police. The only reason why I learned to accept what I see and who they are, I was married to a sage dude. You know, and I understand, we made it clear. When you're dealing with the police, because I got a big mouth, I don't talk to many women, and they can spot me, I'm going to talk. You know what, these guys are acting different, they're more lenient. But you know, these guys are one of the best that they don't have. I got a question in my files here, says that they lack training. I agree with them after I read their policy and procedure management. They took a nine-gun, almost rocking, when you see that man. You know what they trained? Methotop, basic police academy, and training from time to time. Nobody lets them find what time to time is. So is it fair to say that they get a fair shake in this? No. I have a question here in regards to the federal dollars. I never had an opportunity to verify this, if someone would please give a value, you know? But they said Homer is receiving over $200 an hour to support the police department through federal grants. If that's so, be the case. What's going to happen to their money? What's going to happen to those tax dollars? Is it fair to cut out this department and to sacrifice us, ourselves, just for this power struggle that's going on? It's all in a total power struggle. I'm not a member of a clique, maybe y'all believe me some out of it. But the only clique that I care to be a part of is God's clique. He told me not to lean my own understanding, but I'm going to tell you something, last week, I leaned. And I wasn't giving it a fair shake, but when I took it to my father, he answered the question right. So again, Mr. McCollum said he is here, Mr. Calhoun. He would answer any question that he can answer. But through third-hand information, I was told that the mayor and the council were not permitted to come on the advice of their attorney. I don't know if the lady, I'm not taking anything away from it, but whatever question that you have to pose, we have to print it in the paper, we will print it in the paper for your response. If you have a question for the Justice Department, it's likely more than willing and prepared to answer any question that you might have. But what can we do? What can we do just as calm and silly? What can we do? On March 1, the scheduled date of the termination of the Homer Police Department, we're planning on doing it. All the time. We're praying for God to deliver us, because we're being held hostage.
Please talk into the mic, we can't hear you.
We're held hostage to the power struggle. We want released from that power struggle. So continue to submit your questions if y'all would like, I will share some of the questions that I have. Okay, this is one question, and I'm just concerned about it. When they, when they go reaching the decision to abolish, I would like to work, Bernie, the police department, why did they not consult with the citizen? That's a concern. The mayor is an elected official. Our chief is an elected official. Should we not make to get them out of there? If everybody down in Banfield is called Secretary of State, if you want to do a recall or impeachment, that's who you go for. The question about why we're paying for two lawyers? Where those tax dollars going to come from? I can't afford to pay my bills, I can't pay for all these attorneys. My huge concern by a number of people is the hot calls in the water and suing street. Now, my mother, who's eight-seven years old, she used little to no water. She cooked one day a week, and she eat the microwave rest of the week. She only takes a bath with water every day, because she keeps her water in the refrigerator, and she fill that pitcher twice a week. Why come out of water real high? Because they want to go to the race. My mother, again, is eight-seven years old, and she's on a big income. Can we absorb those expenses for these attorneys another way other than through our water bill? Another conservative line was the hiring practice at city halls. I don't know if you all are aware or familiar with the 501(c)(3) organizations. They have certain requirements. After giving it some thought, I really don't, I don't know, and I'm not going to sit here and try to say that they are following the 501(c)(3) requirements, which require to post jobs. You have to post a number of times, just like security, like that attorney they got. That shit have never happened. You have to post, and people have to suffer the beat. You have to select from the people that submit to me. I have someone that said there's a lot of nepotism going on downtown. I don't know, because I don't really know the people downtown. There's a precious few people that I know downtown. But I'm sharing with you what was shared with me, so you all know everything you need to know. They asked the question, "Where does the money go from the traffic violation?" Okay, according to the chief, that's kept and remains near the department. Fortunately. It was a question as to why the mayor, mayor's position have to become full-time when it was part-time, when she's not accessible to the community. Right now, as I stand before you, and this is one that I'm trying to avoid by being the peacemaker. I want to walk in the image of my heavenly Father, and truly, I want to be a peacemaker. But when I first heard the T.B. about the disbanding of the Homer Police Department, I became curious, because I knew what today would bring. And today is just about to bring, there's, right now, as we speak. I'm not going to say it right. Well, there is still a group of people in the process of planning on a recall of our entire town. And I don't think that's quite fair. But if we go to recall and disband Buster, then I'll give consideration to his recall. Russell failed, the mayor failed. So if we're gonna sweep, let's get a vacuum, let's get a hoover. Um, again, when you have issue with the, uh, police department, how often are you allowed to evaluate these questions? And when you're evaluated, what type of support is offered to you to make it more effective in this? We don't have anyone to answer this question? So, leave the issue that's transpiring around me right now. Okay, uh, another question I have here. Rumor, the rumor mill in Homer is something else. And I'm not gonna ask Russell Mill, this is our, our chief. But the question is, did the mayor tell Mills to stay out of city hall? Or request for items to stay to some, anyway. He was requested to stay out, and if the rumor mill has it, they have a restraining order against the chief, who has a dog pile here inside the city limits, which means he has a water bill to pay, and he can't go inside the city hall, yet he still remains the chief. Some of this sounds like kid play, you know, I was a bully when I was a kid. But when we become adults, we should act like adults. Being chief or being the mayor, it doesn't matter, we need to act like adults. And if you choose to go into the, uh, city hall, I know you can't tell them what they have a restraining order, but the next time you be ready to go, call the Concerned Citizen Coalition. These should have equal access to city hall. Another question in here. When I returned in 2003, I returned on a mission to add measures to the quality of life. I utilized city hall. This was not about prosperity for me, it was about prosperity for my community. Well, when it got to be that I had to pay a fee to enhance the lives of my people, neither was to say I couldn't have it anymore. Now, one of the question on my clipboard right here, everybody don't have to pay in this town. Whatever we do, we must learn that we have to have consistency across the board. If someone has access to recreation, I want to see if Spring Lake pays for, I don't know who association with Spring Lake, I'm reading from a clipboard, Spring Lake Church does not pay. They outside city limits. What I'm trying to do covers the whole parish. And I'm just using me in the example, because I don't know any of this, I don't have anything to validate it. This is just what I have in my notes. They said a guy by the name of Moe Johnson, who had, who criminalized the son of city hall, who was a very wealthy young man, did not have to pay. They tell me the burial of Mansfield Walker, who was a very wealthy community man, did not have to pay. It looks like the people that support the opportunity to, to, to advance or, or, or to benefit other people that aren't really established in our community. One other question I have on here is the Department of Recreation. This is one I started not to touch, but I'm gonna touch it anyway, because this is something that was submitted to me, and it is my job to present it to you and the community. If they were here, they could answer this. That position, the Director of Recreation, was given to our Postmaster, Fred Piana. They tell me I don't have anything to validate it, his salary is $2,000 a month. They tell me he in turn hired his wife to do exercise, and she's getting paid $1,000 a month. She works at the post office in Arcade. And we're talking about a household that has in excess of $100,000 a year. And we wonder why our children just walk in the street that the police are having to stop from time to time, because they don't have a job. They hire, they hire outside the town, that's a concern. They go outside of home. When we worried about the United States outsourced, when we outsourced, we're going outside our town, or hiring people to do a job that kill people inside of our parish that's qualified to do it. So, these are among the list of questions that were given to me. And I'm gonna thank each and every one of you all for coming out. I wanna thank our chief, uh, I didn't know who sponsored this event, but I'm gonna tell you, I thank you for having that love and compassion for our community. Uh, I wanna thank our police department for being the men that you are. I wanna truly apologize for the town people not participating in the invitation that I offered and I didn't send to them. Uh, and we would like to plan another meeting, but we can't afford these visits, I'm sure, every week. But the next town council, we, the number of people in this group, I'm gonna see it out. Go downtown and express ourselves. And the reason why it was formatted the way it was, because I didn't want negativity in here. I only wanted positive things. I want a question, answer, and no remarks. I didn't want comments after, after they responded, you know, with their answer. And again, I apologize for bringing you out, and, but I think the outcome has been most refreshing. And I'm gonna compile this question and submit it to the chair, and we will get it, uh, you'll see it in the paper, or you'll see it at the Town Council meeting. Again, thanks to all, we love you, and we must learn to love one another.
Thank you, Marie. I would like for each and every one of you that is here today to take the pledge. Here we are in the season of atonement. I wanna ask each of you, a president long ago, JFK said, "That's not what you, that's not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." If we are to proceed as a unity, we have to have unity. We salute our, we give tribute to our soldiers who played, who put themselves in harm's way for our friends. But you don't have to go to Iraq and Iran to give that salute to our police department, because they put themselves in harm's way through and for our step. You don't get this time. People have died for the right to say that we are for the people and by the people. And it is high time that someone realizes what that means, who you represent. And that's all we are asking. I want us to stand united and to help those, because I can tell you in our community, as Sister Marie can attest to it, our police department, there are some issues, there are some issues that need to be addressed. I have been going back and forth in the little race with the chief, and finally he said, "Look, let's work together." And there was an olive branch that was extended, but was cut off. And again, I say to you, if your roof is leaking, don't tear the house down. Let's get together and fix what needs to be fixed. We voted on the chief, if you did not like it, you should have came out of your comfort zone and voted against him. You voted for a mayor, but if you did not want it, you should have done something different. But that's how it is, some of us did, but that's how it is. We have to deal with the card that we, that we made. And I think, let's, let's, let's get the council to fix what they allowed out, but the budget was approved. The budget was approved for 2013. And we're talking about the livelihoods. Is this, is this the respect that we're gonna show for those who put their lives in harm's way? Again, I salute you. This is history for everyone to come together and say, "We realize we have problems in this community." So now, we must begin to fix it. Those who you put in office, go to them, and we must have a system of accountability in this parish. It has to be. If the city has failed, then our council has failed us. You make those decisions, we put you in there, and you should let them know how you feel on this issue. Because I refuse to support someone who does not support me, I live out of the city limits, what my daughter does live in. And we represent those who, who cannot represent themselves, no matter. So let's stand unified on this, I'm glad that you came out. Again, let's support our law enforcement, yes?
Excuse me, there's some of the townspeople and business owners that had some questions that the chair might not have to put in the paper for the council, councilmen and women, or the mayor to answer. And I think, if we haven't heard any of these questions, this is why we're all here. I think the business owners and the townspeople and the taxpayers, whether you live in or out of the city limit, that's why we're here. We need to have these questions, don't forget, so right here. There's still some questions out here that, maybe you have some great questions, but there's one. But there's still a few out there that I think that maybe need to be heard, that you might need to, somebody needs to jot down there. That's what we run with the impression that we're trying to take away.
What was that impression? And if we're talking about business owners, I really do, I, I, I'm in total
We're here.
If we all have the time, we can, go ahead, being that the, uh, the councilmen are not here, we have to take it to the
That's the integrity of the statement, they're not weird.
I am of no political affiliation, I do not run for mayor. Forgive me. I live on Lake Flaver, but I will run for mayor for Arizona, I'm here in Arizona. First of all, one thing I'd like to address, that was something I was waking with at 4:45 this morning, when I turned on my TV, and that's the news media. I think our leaders in our community have got to step up to our news media. Every time I hear something about Homer, it's a racial issue. I'm tired of racial issues, guys. Some of my best friends are Afro-American. I have a biracial nephew. I don't care whether it's black, white, yellow, green, purple, or blue. Somebody better know 21, 22, 23, whoever it is. When I woke up this morning at 4:45 and turned on that TV, all KTVS 3 said, "There's a town hall meeting tonight about numerous racial issues in city halls." That burned me up. I don't think anybody else on this stage in this room has a racial issue. Just because we have an Afro-American mayor who is knocking heads with a Caucasian police chief, does not make it a racial issue. Now, I know it kind of surprises some of y'all, because I'm kind of a shy guy. That I'm up here. But I've been a business owner in this community since 1987. I pay taxes in this town, I have property, I have a clinic, and I see just as many black people as I do white people, and I care for every one of them, just like they were the poorest of the people. I've got a burning heart in that church. We have white kids, we have black kids, we have white adults, we have Korean adults. You name it, we have, I don't know if we have Indians. Now, I'm just telling you, I'm tired of Homer being labeled as a racial community, because we're not. The problem with the issue is, is that we are two to one black over white in this community. We're 60% black, 40% white. Proportionally, statistically, you're gonna have 60% black crime, 40% white crime. It's proportion, statistics are statistics, okay? I see about 60 to 70% black people in my office, because that's what this community is made of. So I don't wanna hear any more about whether it's a black or white issue. Now, as a property owner, as a business owner in this community, I don't want my property sitting up there without a police force. I can't tell you, I wouldn't tell you at any time, you're not set down for social group. I'm not part of any group, okay? I go to church in that church, I help with the Christian community, that's what I do. I eat dinner at the country club every now and then when Junior Ryan pays for it. But I'm telling y'all, we gotta stop. We need a police department because I feel safer. I don't want my wife going up there at 6 o'clock in the morning to exercise, and I know that there's a police force out there. I can't tell you how many times I've been up there at 8 or 9, 10 o'clock at night, and I see a police officer drive through my parking lot, make a circle, and leave. I can tell you on two different occasions, when these same police officers, whether they're white or black, yellow, green, purple, I don't care, have ran kids out of my parking lot for doing things back there that they shouldn't be doing. Anytime I have a group of kids that have my permission, I've always notified them that there's gonna be some kids there. So I'm just asking y'all, just think of the demographics of Homer. I live on Lake Flaver, but I'm still part of Homer, because I'm a business owner, as numerous people in this room are. I support Russell, and I definitely would support our mayor, but you can't make sense out of nonsense. We got 36.8% of our teenage boys in this community that don't finish high school. 75 to 8% of those are black Afro-American boys. Where's the crime gonna be? It's just statistics, y'all. I've been stopped two times in the last couple of years, when you say I'm a I was stopped in front of, uh, Pizza Hut, driving 52 and 35. Coming to work at 5 o'clock in the morning, it's a strange time of morning, okay? I was pulled over by a black officer. He came into my parking lot, came out to me and asked me if I realized how fast I was going. So I was just, you know, I really didn't, I'm thinking about it. Is this where you work? Yes. Please slow it down and take care of it. Now, was that because a black man stopped a white man? Was that a racial issue, or was he just doing his freaking job? Hello, Keys, their apartments down there, Clay River Plaza, whatever they're called. I was stopped leaving out of town about 10 o'clock one night, had been at my office late, drove down through Keys Food Mart, I was heading home. 55 and 45. I was stopped by a black officer. He pulled me over in front of Peterson Contractors and asked if I realized how fast I was driving. I said, "No, just heading home." "Is there any issue while you're driving down the road so late, 55 miles an hour?" "No, just ready to go home." He said, "Well, I'd like for you to slow it down, there's some parks here, we got some kids, just want you to slow down a little bit." And I said, "Thank you very much." And I said, "Thank you very much. You could have easily written me a ticket as a black officer on a hate crime on a white man." But he didn't, because we don't have a racial problem. That's it. And there's not enough money in the world to pay anyone to do what our police officers do for dime a minute in this town. We've got a higher percentage than any other city, proportionally to this community than any other city in Louisiana. Per capita, we sure do. So sit here and tell me if we're gonna hire less police officers or just disband it, period, and pass it on to my friend David. What's gonna happen at midnight, when you have two full-time sheriff deputies on the call, and the thieves and the thugs call in a safe accident in Blackburn, Louisiana? They send a sheriff's vehicle out there. Then you have another thug calls in something down south of Athens, that there's been a horrible rag in Athens. You know what just happened to Homer, Louisiana? It's a free-for-all, buddy. Well, this is what happens, right? The fakers are fat, and this is fact. Thank you.
Look, probably all the council members here tonight, I want to express my thoughts about a petition that's possibly coming out to disband the councilman and mayor. I'll go for it, even though I'm on the count. I can always start mowing y'all's ass. You know, the last thing my wife told me when we left, she said, "Don't be up there making an idiot out of yourself." We got married about eight years ago. I had a sudden psychopathy with Camper. And I put a hand in the paper. Psychopathy for sale. Got married, why not know the other thing? But now, we're so accomplished lately tonight. We are one community. We are individuals that are bound together from the country that live here. 30 years ago, a friend of mine was born to his mom and dad here in Homer. And for 31 years, he never spoke a word. Last week, I got a message from his mother. He got up that morning, said, "Mama, you borrowed some biscuits." Said, "My goodness, you can talk. Why haven't you talked before now?" "Well, up to now, that's all right."
Is there anyone else in the audience that care how it comes? If you would just come forward. To expedite this process, everybody that wants to speak, put Miss County come forward and ask what they would be able to prepare.
Hi, y'all. My name's Kim McBride. Grew up in Homer. Moved out seven years ago. And I feel like this is a permanent parish issue. I know that thanks to town, I work here in the town, my mother lives here, my kids live here. But this affects everybody. It affects part of the parish, and it affects Homer. So everybody needs to be together. Just because you live outside of the city, doesn't mean this does not affect you. Because just like they say that, if somebody calls in something in Athens, and we only got two sheriff deputies here, and what if our two sheriff deputies are busy here in Homer, and we have a harbor in Athens? That affects part of the parish. So as a parish, we need a man here. Just like Kat said, it's not a black and white issue. I went to school with you. I have black friends that I love more than me, you know? We played high school. We didn't like high school. Was that even black and whites there too? Was that racial? No. It was just that they're Chinese. So racial feeling needs to stop. We need to all get along. When I see some of my black friends on the street, I'm gonna hug their ass. I was with a girl in Portland, because that was a black girl, and I loved her dearly. And I think she loves me too. I have black people that I know if I got in a fight, all I have to do is pick up the phone. That know if they get in a fight, all they have to do is pick up the phone. We all need to be like that, always. So anybody out there, and I mean this with all my heart, if you need me, I'll be there. But I expect the same of everybody else for me too. We need our police department. We need our sheriff's department to be 100%. We need our town protected, and we need our parish protected. Thank you.
I know this is quite long, everybody been waiting for. I know everybody, if I ever listen to it, I'll be in, because we're gonna get up and speak. But I'm speaking on behalf of not being on God's hearing aid. I don't care no man, I don't care God. And the reason why I'm here is like everyone else said, I've said it here one time, this is not a black and white issue. But as a young person, as a black Afro-American, well, I've seen a lot of things go on in this town over the years. And people can paint this picture I ever wanted to. But until it actually happens to you, when the teacher gives you a test in the class, you got kids, maybe 25, in a classroom. Every kid is gonna take that test according to their learning ability and what they got from that teacher. They not all gonna have the same test record, because they gonna take that test according to their ability. And tonight, when everybody gets up here and says what they say, I feel the same way. You only gonna get up here and give a description according to what account that you may or may not have, or your family may have with the police department. So it's no right way to do wrong. It is no wrong way to do right. And you can put one stack of right here and a big stack of wrong up to the ceiling. That right still won't be right. That still won't be wrong. And I talk to you, this is not anything against Chief Mills or the police department. I believe everybody that came here with that mind, frankly, get rid of it, because that's not what we do. Everybody that knows me, from the time I was little up until now, I stand for what's right. I don't care who it is. I have brought my brother to him. When he called me, I was like, "Bill, we can't catch up to brother." "Can you bring him up here?" "He'll take you." "Yes, I'll bring him up there," and I did so. So I'm not trying to play a bad guy. I'm not trying to play the outspoken public figure, whatever y'all been told or whatever, okay? This is about where everybody's agreed on. It's time for all of this stuff to stop. In order to give respect, you must give respect. And there's a lot of whites in this community and out in the audience that I have worked for ever since I was a little boy. I still, if anybody not ever see, I will help. But anytime a person has been wrong, you have a right as a human being, as an individual, to speak what's right to that person to confront you. So this is why we're here. And like the lady said, if you not have ever had an encounter with the police department, of course, you gonna think this being the police department is wrong. But my thing is, of course, the Chief Mills is, this one related to the council. Is this being because that you feel like Sheriff David will not provide the safety and adequate coverage of citizens from Homer? Okay, and also, 15 to 20 years ago, I'll read full records, 15 to 20 years ago, some of the same people that is opposing this disbanding had a committee to disband the police department years ago. Some of the home people, some of the same people that's opposing this was for this 15 years ago. So why?
Biddy, you've been a racist about the police department. We know what you're saying.
And no point is, no, I, for myself, I can speak for myself. No one, I don't want to disband the police department, but if you, if people in the community have been to the chief time after time, after time after time, with complaints and nothing's being done, then what else about the police? And from my understanding, 90% of the feedback that the sheriff has gotten has been all positive. People have been for this disbanding of police department. And so, my thing is, if we need, if the police department is gonna remain operating in the town of Homer, it needs to be fair judgment all throughout the course of it.
Amen.
And that's not me. I can only speak for myself. Thank you. I can only speak for myself, but I mean, I'm gonna say this, and that's gonna be it. Half the people here don't know half the problems that's going on in Homer. They don't know half the problems. And my thing is, we holler, "Let's work together," but this is the only time I have seen black and white together on something like this since I was there in Homer. Let's go to church, son. Let's go to church, son.
Again, everything must have order. I respect Mr. Oldfield's opinion. I respect everybody's entitled to feel the way they choose to feel, or often times, we're feeling wrong in the back.
Most of you know me. I'm sitting here in Southern California back in the 1990s. And having been there, all of this could have easily, easily been avoided if the town council had done this the right way and held this meeting first, before they went and voted to disband the police department. Because, and as I've said before, this is the government of the people, by the people, for the people. We are the ones that are going to be most impacted without this police department. This could have, we don't need any more division, but this could have easily been avoided if they had come set up here and asked our opinion about what we thought. We could have addressed some of the problems that maybe the police department has, and I think they're already addressing them. But we could have already solved this if we had just had it, not gotten the car for the force. Now, we need to slow down. Maybe we could, maybe they will go back, now that they understand how people feel and start over and do it the right way. But we need to all keep ourselves together. The unity that we need in this town is more important than anything. Thank you.
I'm Reverend Martin. I'm a pastor of Grace Bible Church. I'm also a chaplain for the parish, through the sheriff's department. Been chaplain for almost 11, 12 years now. I have the worst job in the world sometimes. I've gotta go tell you that someone you love just died in a car wreck. That's one of my duties. But the main thing I want to bring up tonight, we've talked about the white and black issue and everything else. That's not the issue I read in the paper. It's money. $32,000. I'll pay Russell $32,000 a year to protect my house. It's not the police department that's the problem. It's money.
Yes, it is, Mayor.
The mayor said, "We ain't got enough money. Russell's running overtime." Well, I don't want the police getting off at 5:00 and the robber coming in at 6:15. So we need to ask ourselves, we just voted a tax increase at some minute amount. Everyone of us sitting in here has got a dollar bill in your pocket. If you walked out of here and left that dollar bill, every month, we could cover the $32,000, and we wouldn't have to get rid of the police force. We're not getting rid of them because, Russell was a very good friend of mine. He tells me who's borrowing the cabbages, and then I tell him, "I'm worried about it." We have an opportunity. If we want to approve our police department, we want these young men trained. Training costs money. Just raise a tax increase again of a half a mill, or a mill. I'll make sure every one of us sitting here is paying less than $2,000 a year property tax. My son lives in Santa Maria, California. He has a $250,000 house that's now worth $600,000, but he pays $7,000 a year property tax. Just raise a tax, a half a percent. Our businessmen, Homer Seafood, Gordon's, our chiropractor, Payne Incorporated, has a business. So you get your receipt, and there's another 3 cents on there. So what? So let's go to the city, to the parish, or whoever it does, and tell them, "Listen, we just want an issue. We want to raise $32,000 to repay for the police department. And then we want to raise another $10,000 so they can be trained." Well, that's right. But if we paying the police department and we get a bond issue, she doesn't have an issue, because she's concerned about the money. So that's the thing I want to bring up. Yeah. Well, there's a lot of other issues, but the main issue I want to bring up is, if we need money, everybody be in and pull out an extra dollar.
If you want a question or want us to address an issue, please stop and hit the card and go out the door, and we seek to get to the appropriate person or persons.
I've got a real good question. How and why does our mayor all of a sudden have to take these expensive trips? Take all these thankful women and everything else? What do you pay for? Her own gold and all this stuff? That money there could go towards the police department. A lot of that's big enough for the police department, where we would have to run, no taxes, none of that. And my question is, can we see the books?
So if all been said, and all the buildings expressed, all the prayers, they should have been prayed. Does it continue to focus on community? Does it continue to focus on changes? And then it's learned to truly put God.
You like people know me, Steve Boyles. I had a business here in Homer. I don't anymore, but I still live here. I've known several years for playing parish schoolboy. Mr. Bennett from Oldfield, he makes some laws. Some laws he just wants to alter. We're not here to alter. What my main concern is... What my main concern is, 44 years ago, I fought for each and every person in this room. They had the right to their freedom of speech, they had the right to their vote. And it really burns me up that my mayor and my council killed me, my vote is no good. We thank my father. I love my country, I fought for it. And I don't like anyone killing me, that I, my vote doesn't count. And that is one of the main things that really angered me about this whole situation, my vote.
So I assume the issue can't be addressed, limited, medication. We spoke with the night, we were before the judge, we could have talked more. Premier council could have been here responding to one question. I know there's a lot of concern, and there are some issues that lie in every department. If you clear one question that I can respond to, this is not an issue of the sheriff's department or the police department. I think everybody in this room votes, voted, had an opportunity to vote for our chief, if you live in the city, if you live in the parish, or in the city, you can vote for our sheriff. And there is nothing in my mind that thinks that the citizens of Homer will go ahead and some type of law enforcement.
That's correct.
If this takes place. That's what we're here for. We're fighting to keep the whole police department, and hopefully Monday after court, then we'll have a ruling in our favor to the police operate through 2013, because it might be appropriate to the police department. And if not, then we have to take it a step further and do what we got to do. But I can assure you that we're going to protect you the best we can, all we got. And once again, if it does come to pass, I have all the faith in the sheriff's department and these other officers out there, probably working for the sheriff's department to continue the service. And as an elected official, marshal, chief, whatever title they're going to be, I'll, I'll fulfill my obligation to the people who support me as chief of police.